Yeah.
Witham?
Here.
Goodwin?
Here.
Cameron?
Yeah.
Barry?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent will lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Vincent. Next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabuck, the people who have stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda are any scheduled public hearings. We actually have three tonight. So first up is the public hearing on ordinance seven dash twenty-five, which is a supplemental appropriation of additional state adequacy grant funding for the school department, which if approved would appropriate two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars from additional state adequacy grant revenue to the school department budget. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight in regards to ordinance seven dash twenty-five? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our next public hearing, which is for ordinance eight dash twenty-five, which is to amend Chapter thirty-four, exemptions and credits, Section three, thirty-four point one, elderly property tax exemption, amending the amount of the elderly property tax exemption, which if approved would expand eligibility to this exemption. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? All right. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on. Our last public hearing tonight is for ordinance nine dash twenty-five, which is a supplemental appropriation to repair manhole structures on High Street in the vicinity of Horn Street to Sinclair Ave, which if approved would appropriate seventeen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars from unassigned fund balance to the capital outlay budget in the general fund, and appropriate eighty-two thousand six hundred and ten dollars from sewer fund revenue to the sewer fund budget. Is there anyone who wishes to speak towards this tonight? All right. Seeing none. That will close our public hearings. Next up, we have item five, which is comments by visitors. City Council and Mayor's office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? Anyone who wishes to speak in public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item six on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Chair obtained a motion for the approval of the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the city council meeting held on October seventh, twenty twenty-four. Counselor Witham?
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Counselor Witham moves to approve the consent calendar as presented, seconded by Counselor Parity Katzen Zero. Question for the council is on the adoption of the consent calendar. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you are opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Right. Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it. Consent calendar is adopted. Thank you. Item seven on the agenda is comments by city councillors. Are there any comments this evening by councillors? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda item eight, which is communications. Tonight, we have none. Item nine is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof by reference or otherwise. We also have none. And item ten is the mayor's report. Thank you, Honorable Counsel. I'm pleased to announce tonight that the mayors of Dover, Rochester, and myself, in partnership with Stratford County, have come to a decision on the bids for operation of the Willand Warming Center. And tonight, as you probably have noticed, we are presenting you with the final contract, which will then allow for, if you guys approve it, the city manager to enter into an MOU with the county and the other cities for operations this year. After publicly opening bids this September and receiving two potential bidders, two mayors, the county and myself have decided to contract with East Coast Evolution Leadership for operation of the Willand Center for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five season. East Coast Evolution Leadership came in at a bid amount of just shy of two hundred thousand dollars, which was lower than the other bidder. And they also come to us highly recommended with extensive experience running shelters throughout New Hampshire. East Coast Evolution Leadership has been operating the Beach Street Warming Center for a number of years, which is City of Manchester's, one of their main warming centers. They have also previously run the Concord Warming Center and are looking to do so this year, and are also hoping to operate the National Warming Center. They have come to us highly recommended. They've been more than willing to work with us on any of the planning and the needs that our three communities have for this winter, and we are really pleased to hopefully go into contract with them. The contract does have some specific provisions that I believe have clarified previously, but would like to clarify and discuss some of them tonight. The first of these provisions is the fifty-person cap on attendance at the shelter. This was written about in Foster's, and I felt like it was worth mentioning tonight because I think there was some confusion on the cap and the number and all that, so just wanted to provide some insight. The number came about during discussions over the past year with, we were advised by a number of different organizations on how to provide safe attendance in the Warming Center. After communicating with safety personnel, organizations that were familiar with the population that we serve, that were familiar with the facility, fifty was the recommended number that we were given to aim for, so that everyone who is attending the Willand Center is receiving adequate attention, services, and space within the facility. As I've been making clear previously, and as has been made clear by previous service providers to the Willand Center, the center itself and the building itself are not the perfect building for the services that it's being used for. It was originally planned for temporary operations. The building does not have ample bathrooms or showers. The facility was a former martial arts studio. I think many of us know this. And so in developing the plans for this year, the mayors and myself were cognizant of trying to have the safest operations possible and are hoping that this fifty-person number can be maintained. That being said, we also know that our numbers last year often exceeded this fifty-person limit. And so we certainly developed contingency plans to ensure that everyone, regardless of numbers, is able to stay stafe, excuse me, to stay safe from the harsh winter weather this season. And so the first part of kind of the plan is that if necessary, the building does have a max occupancy of around eighty, in the eighties range. I can't remember the specific number. So the contractors are authorized to go up to this number in situations that require this. It's certainly not ideal, again, considering all the input that we received about how the building is set up. You know, being around eighty is a lot more people than fifty, but it is allowable. And so if necessary, they are more than welcome to go up to that number within, you know, communicating with us in the county. The second part to this plan, though, is the strong system of coordination among all local service providers that have kind of, the system has been strengthened and improved over the past year. Welfare directors, service providers, and case managers are meeting weekly and often more frequently than that, if need be. And they have strengthened the relationship amongst all of them to allow for better coordination of these services between all the parties. These coordinated efforts allow for service providers in the region to work together to offer a distributed network of shelters and winter warming. And we are expecting that the contract organization that they attend these meetings and coordinate with all of these other providers in order to find suitable space and protection for folks from the cold if the numbers in the Willand Center begin to reach the upper limits of the capacity that is set. So for example, we recently heard from Community Action Partners of Stratford County, Betsy Andrews Parker came and spoke to us about a different potential shelter a few weeks ago, back in September. And at that meeting, when she was discussing the Home For Now Shelter she was requesting funding for, she mentioned that they will also have room for upwards of fifteen people at that new place for winter warming. So again, if nights are cold and the Willand Center begins to exceed its fifty numbers limit, East Coast Evolution Leadership could reach out to CAP and work with them to transport folks to Home For Now Shelter to utilize some of the available space that they have there. CAP is not the only organization, nor is Home For Now the only building that will have some of this distributed network of winter warming. But I just wanted to use that as an example because it was one that we were familiar with. Other local organizations are partnering on these efforts. Welfare directors in the three cities are working to ensure certainly that no one is cold this winter and everyone remains safe. So I really do want to kind of make sure people aren't afraid of that fifty limit number. It is something we have really thought through deeply. And we really hope that this distributed network of winter warming amongst the various service providers will be kind of the critical piece that ensures that Willand Center, you know, stays within an operational number of people, so that we are not pushing those hundreds of people that we saw last year, which becomes at some points unmanageable and unsafe. I'm also hoping that this will allow for partnerships to continue to strengthen and bridge some of the needs that we have in the tri-cities and prepare us for future winters in years to come where we can even expand this distributed network to maybe someday not have the Willand Warming Center. Another part of this whole negotiation that I wanted to share, and I think is pertinent to us, is that Summersworth will no longer be expected to provide additional funding for the operations of the Willand Center. Last year, we were expected to provide not only municipal services, but also, you know, being police, fire, and ambulance services. But we were also expected to pay an additional fifteen thousand dollars. This year, we are not paying that amount. We are only contributing the municipal services to the center, which was, I think, an important part of the agreement. Certainly, there are other improvements that we have made that I'm hopeful will make for a really smooth and safe winter for all. And I haven't certainly mentioned everything. If you have questions, I'm open to those when we get to the discussion phase of this tonight. But I really am beyond thankful for the hard work of the other mayors, the folks at the county level, who are helping to ensure that we keep our community members safe this winter. There are certainly some difficult discussions that were had, decisions that were made, but I am really confident in East Coast Evolution's leadership. And I'm really beyond thankful that they were able to lend their experience to the community in this way. As agreed to between the mayors, this is going to be the last year of operations of the Willand Center, so I'm really hopeful for the support of council when we get to that Agenda item tonight, so that we have safe operations for the winter. That concludes my mayor's report. And without objection from the council, I'd actually like to move to Agenda item sixteen, new business other, item B, which is the Willand Warming Center's MOU authorization. Again, it's a vote to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the City of Dover, City of Rochester, and Stratford County to operate an emergency cold weather winter warming center at thirty Willand Drive in Summersworth from November twenty twenty-four through March twenty twenty-five. So seeing no objection, Counselor Witham?
Yeah, I'd move that the city council ratify the agreement, at least from our perspective.
Thank you so much. Counselor Witham moves to ratify the agreement and allow the city manager to enter into an MOU. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Goodwin. So again, a motion before the council is to approve the MOU for this, the operation, and allow the city manager to enter into that for the winter season for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Is there a discussion? Counselor Vincent and then Gibson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I just don't want to diminish the fact that the services that will be given to the Willand Warming Center as far as emergency and so forth, that's actually a great cost. So I just don't want to make it like, you know, Summersworth is not contributing money-wise. The value is in the service that we're going to give. And I don't have a number in front of me, but I know that there's been several visits there from police, fire, and ambulance, or medical service. And I just want to, you know, make that clear, you know, that there is a cost to the city. And it might not be coming in a money right in your, in your face, but it's coming in a service. I just want to put that out there.
Appreciate that. Yeah, a big part of the reason why we don't have to do the fifteen thousand this year is because the county and the other cities recognize the extensive services that we were providing, and they were more often than we thought that they were going to be originally. So thank you.
And I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson, you're next.
Okay, I heard the numbers that you listed, the fifty up to max eighty. There were nights far in excess of that upper range, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty people. The only other number I heard coming out is fifteen through the Rochester location. Where, let's say that we see that number, which on a number of occasions occurred, where are these people going?
Yeah, again, it's not just that one building that CAP operates that we're working with. There's a variety of others. In years past, we've worked with Crossroads out of Portsmouth. They've taken a number of people, and they have a bigger facility than we have. They have been more than willing to work with us and coordinate with us if we have numbers that exceed that, to take people. CAP has said that a variety of their other facilities could chip away at that. And so to kind of bridge the gap, we kind of went through and said, we have enough coverage in these places. Now certainly, if we have a night and, God forbid, a hundred and twenty people show up at Willand that night, certainly, they will be working to try to find them places to stay. We do have authority to exceed operation, or excuse me, the capacity limits. Certainly, that would need to be approved through the emergency management group that runs this. But again, we think that we're setting ourselves up better this year than in years previous to be able to distribute folks and provide them more direct services at various locations rather than having one centralized location. I hope that answers it as best as possible.
Transportation?
Transportation, there is a van that they utilize. It's a part of the contract that they're able to utilize that and transport people. Other service providers also have transportation available that they can utilize. And worse comes to worse. If we need to, transportation can be provided other ways. Counselor Parity Katzen Zero?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate your explanation and clarification and appreciate that I got to speak with you about this. I had a number of concerns, and it sounds like certainly a lot of work has gone into this. And I'm glad to hear that there will be expanded capacity outside of the capacity that we know that this building can handle. I would request that when I know that our, our police and emergency responders will be counting calls for service, I would request that they be separated from shelter-specific visits versus, we heard in the past, that really any impact from people who stay at the shelter, even if it's, you know, something happens at Walmart, something happens, you know, in the surrounding areas, that that's being counted as a call for service for the shelter. I certainly see the impact, but I think the impact there is calls for service for homelessness in general. And I want to be able to specify and differentiate what is a call for service to address this vast problem that we all know is a really vast problem versus what is a call for service to that location. So that, that would be my request. I know that that number is looked at with alarm, and I just don't think it's always fair to attribute having a shelter here that's meeting people's needs to an increased call for service when, you know, if this shelter were somewhere else, maybe some people would move closer to that shelter and wouldn't be here, but certainly a lot of them would still be here. So I really appreciate all the work that you've done there. I appreciate that CAP and the other service providers are in coordination. They know a lot of these people by name and have really strong relationships with them. So I'm happy to hear the encouragement of this new person running the shelter. We'll be coordinating with them. I think that's really important. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Counselor Witham?
Thank you. Always say I'll be supporting the agreement. I think it's fair to say that the entire system last year was stressed. And you can define stress as you so choose, whether that's calls for service, capacity issues at the facility, some of the negative media that came from what occurred last year. I think there were a number of different stressors that, at the end of the day, I just lump into the category, the system was stressed. And we could point fingers as to why that is. That's not at all helpful to the situation. It just was. What I like about where we're at this year with the agreement is that there is at least a recognition that numbers matter. The more people that are there, the more stressed the system will be. So the cap, if you will, of fifty, maybe eighty, at least is recognizing that when we get above those numbers, we need to have a system in place to manage it. And it sounds as though there is. So that's a huge step in the, in the right direction, which is why I support this. Last year, to no fault of who ran the facility last year, there wasn't that number. So the system, it was perhaps designed to fail, right? Because we didn't have a mechanism to manage the numbers that we saw. So cautiously optimistic that this will help us. I too do welcome good data. It's my recollection, Counselor Parity Katzen Zero, that last year, the numbers we were given were calls to the facility, and there was question about how many more calls there were if we were to add those on the street or at neighboring businesses. So I had a different view of the numbers, but that clarity from our public safety chiefs is going to be critically important because that's at least a data set that many of us, myself included, did look at, right? It's at least one data set among with, among others. So I'll support this. I think it's a better step. It's a better management of how we're going to go about this this winter. To be clear, this does not solve our problem of homelessness. That is a multifaceted issue that is well beyond what we can address in these chambers. But I think what we're doing here is our small part to help with at least one aspect of homelessness, which is being outdoors during extremely cold winter nights. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Barry?
Most of what I was going to say has already been said, but I very much am in agreement that this is just a small step to a bigger issue. And I'm hoping that as we collaborated on this, that we can continue to collaborate with other communities around us, because again, I know that this is a larger issue that we can hopefully continue to work on. And we're not alone in this. I think everybody's trying to figure out what to do, what is the best course of action. And unfortunately, there's many things that happen with this to create this problem that we are in. And I know a lot of residents have asked me, like, what's our plan going forward? I think having this at least in place for the winter will be great, but I'm hoping we can continue that conversation. One thing I will say I have heard a lot of is that this also has a very bad social acceptance out there, that most people don't want to see this, they don't want to deal with it, they don't want to pay for it. And unfortunately, I will say, these are humans. They live in our community. They are part of our community, and I think we need to do right by them. So I will be in support of this.
Thank you. Other counselors for discussion? Seeing none. If you are in favor of allowing for the city manager to enter into the MOU for the Willand Warming Center, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Katzen Zero?
Yes.
Me show.
Yes.
All right. City manager, you may now enter into the MOU. Thank you so much.
Your Honor, if I could, I should have asked during the comment section, will Dover and Rochester be taking similar votes in, has that happened yet?
No, we are the first. So they will be doing that at their next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I perhaps should have spoken in earlier.
No, it's okay. We, I should have introduced you as well. If you wouldn't mind coming up, Counselor, without objection, this is city, the county's administrator, Ray Bauer. He was here for any questions. I totally breezed right over you, Ray. I'm so sorry.
No, you did a wonderful job, Mr. Mayor. Certainly better than I could have. Just a couple of things. When the MOU was produced, we tried to, or I tried to listen to everything that was said by the mayors and the city managers and include all that in the agreement. I did want to say that last year, I noticed with some disdain that the, we believe the state really didn't contribute what they should have. They've doubled their contribution to a hundred thousand dollars this year. So that enabled us, so that Summersworth, besides the fact that you provide all emergency services, doesn't have to contribute, but it'll also lessen the contribution of Dover and Rochester, which I so notified. The bid was a little bit less than what the MOU says, but it was specifically to address transportation, which was one of the questions that came up earlier in the discussion. Also, you know, as a fallback, the county also can provide transportation, you know, if there's a need to move people into different areas. So I wanted to mention that. And when I mention something totally off-subject, Mr. Mayor, it's a good thing.
All right. I love it. Only good things are allowed.
The county just received notice last week that we received a seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar grant to enhance the radio systems of all emergency services for the cities and towns in Stratford County. We'll be seeking approval to expend those funds Wednesday night. And I'm sure Councilman Vincent will be there to lend his support as a delegation member. So our dispatch center director will be in touch with the city managers and police and fire chiefs to see how we can best distribute that money. So the money's not meant for us. It's meant for, to distribute in cooperation with the three million dollars that the county invested in enhancing our, our radio communication system for the towns in this, in this case that we dispatched for. So I did want to mention that that money will, it's committed.
That's great news. Thank you so much for me.
If there's any questions on the MOU, I'll try and answer those.
Yeah. Would you be amenable to questions?
I would be, certainly, as best I can answer.
Yeah, I should have asked this earlier, too, but I thought I heard it mentioned, but I couldn't remember if it was a yes or no. But so the tri-cities are funding this, and Summersworth in kind. Are the other towns in the county also contributing to this?
They are not, except for that share that the county contributes and that share that they contribute to the county taxes. So the answer is no. I think there was a concerted effort, and there was certainly stress during these, these discussions, that we do a better job at determining where the ladies and gentlemen who use the shelter actually come from. When we've asked them, they've always identified it as being, coming from the cities. I'd expect if we delved into it, you'd find that they migrated to the cities because the cities is where the services are located. That's not where they came, originally came from. So one of the things that I think was stressed in the, in the discussions with the new vendor was to try and really find out where they come from, which would put us into a better position to be able to charge back to the, to the towns that are also certainly involved in this regional issue.
And what does the county contribution this year look like in comparison with last year? I know the state funding has gone up.
I wish I could tell you exactly. We're kind of the, the step back. We're, we're the ones that, last year, the days exceeded the contract. So the county came up with the rest of the money, probably around forty thousand dollars, to expand the number of days and in addition to expand the scope of services, which included to try and find a more permanent and stable housing situation for the ladies and gentlemen, and as well as treatment when necessary, for the ladies and gentlemen that utilize the shelter. So that's where our funding was primarily used.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Witham?
Thanks, Ray, for coming tonight. And thanks for all you've done at the county level. And I think I certainly should pass on some gratitude to Chairman McGlarus, who I think has championed this as well. You know, initially, when the shelter was purchased by Dover and the tri-cities got involved, the county was, was sort of a step outside of that. But the county, very willingly and at its own request, jumped into the fray, as it quickly became evident through our conversations, that this is a regional issue. And if you're going to talk regional, maybe that at least starts with the county as the region, right? And you and I both know it's bigger than that, right? But that's at least a good first step. I do appreciate trying to, again, back to data. Data's going to help us, I think, in the long term. You know, where are the unhoused individuals from? And that's a difficult question to answer, I would guess. Where are you from, right? Is that where you were born, where you, where you were when you went unhoused, where you were last night? So how the question is asked and how we get that data, I think is important, maybe difficult, but I think important. You know, Counselor Peppin isn't here tonight. If he were here, I can see him asking you or begging you that others have to contribute to this cause, not just the tri- to this cause, not just the tri-cities and the county.
There is some clear definitions on the part of the state of New Hampshire that are utilized when determining chargeback for purposes of Medicaid services. You know, we're, I'm going to be working with the vendor to share those kinds of definitions, and perhaps those are the types of questions that can be asked that will clear up where somebody comes from. And that primarily is related to where were you before you were, in the case of the state, institutionalized, but in this case, where were you before you became homeless? Where did you grow up? Those are the types of questions I think that need to be more focused than they have been in the past, and I think that would be, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Bauer? Thank you so much for being here.
One last thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. The, there was a couple of questions by Dover regarding the indemnification, hold harmless things. We've worked that out, and I bring this to your attention because there's another contribution on the county part. We are insuring the building. Should there be any damage to the building as a result of the occupants that are there? We don't envision any, but the county's accepted that responsibility and have worked that out. Fortunately, we're all pretty much insured by Primex. So I spent some time getting some proper wording from Primex that I'm sharing, that I've shared with Mike Joyle, and he and I will work out that agreement. So there won't be, and also, Primex reviewed these, this particular MOU to make sure that the, should there be any issues, that responsibility is properly delegated. So I wanted to assure you of that also, which is a little larger piece of an answer to your question.
Thank you.
One last thing. I got to meet your city clerk today, and she was absolutely wonderful. And I wanted to mention that.
She's pretty great. We're pretty lucky, yeah. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all. A pleasure.
Appreciate you being here.
And it's a pleasure to be a Summersworth resident.
Yes. We're glad to have you. All right. Thank you all. Really appreciate the support on this tonight. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 11, which is Reports of Standing Committees. Finance Committee Chairman Witham, you're up first.
And I'll report tonight. Finance Committee is meeting this Thursday, 4:30 PM here.
Perfect. Thank you. Next is Government Operations Committee Chairman Michu.
Yeah, we have not met, Your Honor.
Great, thank you. Next is Economic Development Committee Chairman Goodwin.
I had a report.
Thank you. Next is Public Safety Committee, since Councilor Peppin is absent tonight, Vice Chair Vincent, has there been a meeting?
There's been no meeting.
All right, thank you so much. Next is Public Works and the Environment Committee, Chairman Witham.
I'll report.
All right, wow, can we go? Like, six for six. Recreation Committee, Chairwoman Cameron.
I do have a report.
Spoke too soon.
All right, we met on October 8th at 3:00 PM in the executive room. We approved the past minutes of June 12th. We had program updates from Director Mears. We also met the new recreation director, she told us a little bit about her background. Let's see. We had Pee-wee soccer on October 12th, the season was ending, tiny top, tiny topers program finishing September 25th. She also mentioned that the 50-plus Hilltopers walking program was canceled due to lack of participation, but hoping to bring it back in the spring. The Summersworth Senior Picnic is tomorrow, the 22nd, hosted by the Summersworth Police Association and Housing Authority at Butler Ave from 11:30 to 1:30. Rec basketball for grades 1 to 6 is open for registrations, and the program begins Saturday morning starting December 7th. Let's see. She also mentioned the city staff has reached out to the schools and community requesting notes and cards to veterans, which will be picked up by a member of the VFW to distribute to veterans accordingly. The recreation staff is accepting pictures of community pets for the Halloween pet costume contest, and that will be shared via the Facebook page. The Ash Street Butterfly, Monarch Butterfly sign has been installed, and interpretive signage of the butterfly's life cycle will be installed in a couple weeks. And then, the former St. Laurent Park Land and Water Conservation Fund is going through a conversion process, and they are, he explained that the city staff was contacted by the New Hampshire Division of Parks Recreation concerning a grant that was received in the 1970s for recreation improvements to the former park. It was further explained that the grant required that the city retain that property for outdoor recreation or support outdoor recreation perpetuity, and therefore, the city is required to go through a conversion process where we can identify land that is not currently zoned as recreation and convert it to such in order to uphold the grant's requirement. The restrictions put forth on the former St. Laurent Park were not required to be part of the deed in the 1970s, and was not known by city staff or Ameresco. So they are working to locate land to fulfill this conversion requirement, and have come up at two separate locations, one Winter Street and one at the Malle Farm site. They noticed that city staff favored the Malle Farm property, and recalled the Conservation Commission was looking into grants to help fund walking trails throughout the land as well. So it was also mentioned, there was a concern, although the site is zoned industrial, some of the site is already used as recreational, and is unsure if the state will approve the location for this reason, but staff will be looking for feedback from the committee to move forward with contacting the state. We voted to support the Malle Farm property for this conversion project and questioned the possibility of expanding the recreational zone. Director Mears confirmed that the city can expand the zone, but would want to confirm the state first. Deputy City Manager Smith also added that the conversion has to do with the value of the property as opposed to acreage. They confirmed that the city would utilize a real estate agent to assist in obtaining the value of the property. Councilor Gibson stated that the Malle Farm site is ideal, it will clean up the zoning and hopefully meet the needs of the state. Deputy City Manager Smith also stated that the restrictions will be recorded on the deed at this time around, as is now required. And we, let's see, we made a motion to support the city staff continuing exploring the use of the Malle Farm site for the St. Laurent Conversion Project. The new director of the REC just told us a little bit more about herself and how she made it this way to New Hampshire. We concluded our meeting at 3:19. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Agenda Item 12, which is Reports of Special Committees. Are there any reports of special committees this evening? Yang Nan, next up, turn it over to City Manager to deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of council have the following comments that were included in the meeting packet for this evening. Under unfinished business, the ordinance 725 regarding supplemental appropriation to the school department, regarding additional state adequacy grant funding. I just wanted to point out, hopefully you saw in your packet, a copy of supplemental information that was provided by the superintendent and the business administrator regarding the use of the funding for IT technical, technology, I always say that word, purchases. In regards to ordinance 825, for those who weren't aware, I just mentioned, if approved, the elderly property tax exemptions will increase as follows. For persons 65 to 74 years old, goes from $65,000 to $110,000. For persons 75 to 79 years old, it goes from $80,000 to $135,000. And for a person 80 years or older, it increases from $90,000 to $150,000 if qualified. Jumping over to new business, 1025, to amend police offenses regarding permit and reserve parking by adding parking spaces along Main Street permitted for parking during a snow emergency. I provided counsel and Your Honor with the redlined version of the proposed ordinance changes, a map depicting the added parking spaces, and a memorandum from Director Bobinski. I recommend a public hearing be scheduled for the next regular council meeting on Tuesday, November 12th at 7:00 PM. That's Tuesday, since the 11th is Veterans Day and observed holiday for the city. Under ordinance 1125, you can do them both at once, I can go to the next one. You can do both at once.
The mayor had a big sandwich before the meeting.
Digesting, exactly.
Ordinance 1125 is regarding amending as ordinance Chapter 19, establishing, establishment of a zoning district to create the Maple Street overlay district, as well as other supporting amendments for this action to take place. The Economic Development Committee of Council met on October 7th and voted to recommend these zoning changes. I provide you a memorandum from planning technician Dana Crossley, along with a redline of the proposed zoning changes. Again, coupled with 1025, Your Honor, recommend a public hearing for the next council meeting on Tuesday, November 12th at 7:00 PM.
Yes, without objection.
Thank you. Moving into one resolution that's new, 1625, is regarding voting to authorize the manager to acquire property adjacent to the former National Guard Radiance Center off Blackwater Road via lot line adjustment with Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as Eversource. I provided you a copy of a map that showed the triangle area of the dirt right-of-way that Eversource owns. The rest of the dirt road, if you will, the dirt way, is owned by the city. Eversource staff has given preliminary approval, however, we are waiting final approval from Eversource. This action is one of several steps being taken to finalize the sale of this property for the proposed housing development that was presented to the city council. We have a purchase and sale with the developers on that issue, on that sale. Under other, vote to release the restrictions imposed upon property located at 28 Green Street, and it's identified by tax parcel 10-178, and authorizing the manager to take any necessary action to release the restrictions. Again, the EDC met on October 7th and voted to recommend that the council release these restrictions. Our city attorney has provided the attached release of restrictions document that would be recorded if approved. One of the new owners, Attorney Robert Pravidi, plans, isn't a tenant, so it should be there, should you have any questions. And that's the old Chabot's Creamery. The restrictions were placed under an other vote, so we went ahead and placed it also under another vote. C, confirm proposed Hamilton Street water tank, Noble Pines, replacement location. I provided you updated information that Director Bobinski worked out with our engineer, Amber Hall, and our right PS engineers who are on this project. And this is a follow-up to the last meeting's discussion. Under informational items, we have an application regarding city ordinance Chapter 31, Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program for five Main Street, the former police station. The EDC, again, the Economic Development Committee of Council met on October 7th and voted to support this applications request, applicant's request for seven years of tax release. Was submitted by Hawkins Family Revocable Trust, if you recall, the owner that purchased that property. Director Mears provided a memorandum that outlines the criteria needed to be met in accordance with our city ordinance Chapter 31. And I request that we schedule, Your Honor, a public hearing for the next meeting, Tuesday, November 12th, and then take action under other for this application.
Yep, without objection.
Thank you, Your Honor. City of Summersworth Little League Mirror Project received a letter from Adele Cecilia, however you say that name, Director of the New Hampshire State Council of the Arts. In the letter, she informed the city that we have been awarded an Arts for Community Engagement grant in the amount of $6,400. I will need to place a resolution on your future council agenda and move forward with the acceptance of this grant award. If folks could tell me if you, if everybody's willing to sponsor it, or give a yay, please.
Do you want to hear maybe an official?
No.
Cross the board?
Thank you. Other grants, I attached a memorandum that Director Mears provided to me regarding grant opportunities that staff will be pursuing, and I've already approved. These are New Hampshire Certified Local Government Grant. This grant is for $20,000 to complete a historical and cultural resources master plan chapter. Also included, that application is $7,000 to work with the Historic District Commission to provide training under the Commission Assistance and Mentoring Program that was included. Further explanation regards to holding public meetings on how to deal with historical renovations, I believe, is the intent. That's some of these in the past, but this will provide funding to bring in speakers. EPA Brownfield's cleanup grant, staff will be reapplying for EPA funding for an approximate amount, actually, it's over $750,000. That was approximately the amounts we applied for last time. We have to increase that amount, and we're getting updated estimates from Novus Engineering, and that's coming through, I ought to mention, from SRPC. They receive assessment grants, again, they've been very supportive over the last several years in utilizing some of their funds to get assessments of contaminated properties in the city. And last but not least, housing champion designation. If successful, this New Hampshire state designation will position the city to be placed in a select municipal category to receive future funding assistance or opportunities made exclusively to designated housing champion communities. So thank you, Director Mears, for all that hard work, and her staff also. In regards to REC supervisor, her name, by the way, is Julia Creeling. Hopefully, I didn't butcher that name. Julia Creeling. She's only been with us now for a couple of weeks. She comes from Colorado, she's a snowboarder, she graduated from the University of Colorado, and she loves the outdoors, so we welcome her and look forward to working with her. Thank you, Your Honor, that concludes my comments.
Absolutely. Welcome to the table.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I ask a couple questions of the manager?
Sure.
Okay, in reference to the elderly exemptions, okay, we've increased, with that ordinance, increased the value of the exemption, how about the criterion for being eligible?
The door's shut on that to have it done now. We'll be doing that next year. We haven't lost track of that. We have noted that. When we went to the finance committee, we talked about that, and this is the one to get it on the books now. It's too late to change the assets, but we will be looking forward next year to increase the, to make the assets more attainable, if that's the right word.
Okay, and?
So that more people can qualify or have a good chance of qualifying.
And I just lost the other one. Thank you.
No problem. All right. That will bring us to Agenda Item 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Do we actually have none?
Could I?
All right. Sneak it in, go ahead.
Do you have an idea of how many person hours are involved in grant writing for the
I wouldn't even kid, kid a guess, but we, I think my, our staff does an exceptional job, and we do it in a team approach, and we're always aggressively pursuing every grant we can, the police department, fire department, planning, you name it.
I appreciate all the efforts that everybody puts in. I know how much hard work they all do. What I was reaching towards was, would it be worth considering creating a new position specifically to deal with grant writing in the city?
Well, I'll be, more staff is always helpful, but it may be lower, lower in the level of urgency than some other, perhaps, things that you'll see in the upcoming budget, but it's certainly a good thought, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to Agenda Item 14, which is items that have been laid upon the table. We have none. Brings us to Agenda Item 15, which is unfinished business. First up, we have our ordinances. The chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on ordinance 7-25, which is a supplemental appropriation of additional state adequacy grant funding to the school departments, which, if approved, would appropriate $262,265 from state adequacy grant revenue to the school department budget. City Clerk?
Ordinance number 725, supplemental appropriation of additional state adequacy grant funding for the school department.
Thank you. Ordinance 7-25 has been read first. Ordinance 7-25 has been read first and second time, is now open to further amendments. All right, seeing no amendments, I will look for a motion on Ordinance 7-25. Counselor Witham.
For the adoption of the ordinance.
Counselor Witham moves to adopt Ordinance 7-25, seconded by Counselor Parity Cottenzero. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Ordinance 7-25. I will open up to discussion, so I don't forget my guests this time, like I did earlier. We do have the Superintendent and the Business Administrator for the Summersworth Schools Department. If, without objection, I will invite them up if they maybe just could stand if we have questions. I assume that's possible, without objection. All right. Thank you. If you want to approach the microphone, thank you so much. I do see we have some hands. We'll start with Counselor Gibson.
Not for the school department, but just as discussion for the ordinance, I would like it on record that every time this has come up before the City Council, we have voted full funding of the amounts to the school department, where it seems that people think that we have ulterior motives every time that this comes up before us. We don't. We support the schools. We've supported the schools to the best of our ability, and I will be voting on this again to transfer the full amount. It's school funds. The school should have all.
Thank you. Other discussion. Counselor Witham.
Thank you. I think as I reported out from committee at the last meeting, when the school department develops its budget, probably underway now for the school year '26, Katie and her team are very conservative in their estimates in what we are going to receive for state adequacy aid money. More, because of that conservative approach, they do not put into the budget typically what we get. So, and here we are, you know, some six-plus months later, we now know what we're going to get, so they're asking that this be included in their budget. If they knew upfront, it would be baked into the budget to begin with. So, I agree with Counselor Gibson that this is money that is for the schools. It should go to the schools, so this is sort of easy for me. But I will ask a question of either Katie or the Superintendent in terms of that adequacy money. I know that's conservative, but where do you even get the number to start with? Is it based upon the prior year, or do you get some inkling from the state, or?
Yeah, so each November 15th, the state will give us an estimate of what we're going to receive to build our budget, and you can build anywhere up to 95%. They guarantee us, so we build in the full amount usually, because if we go down to the 95%, it means cutting on the expense side. And then they give us the revised estimate in September of what we're actually going to receive.
So it's not just a shot in the dark?
No, it's not. They give us that number based on ADM of our students that are enrolled and a bunch of other.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Other questions? Yes, Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
Yes, thank you. As the Counselor up to the school board, I've heard a little bit more of the information, but I just want to stress how important it is and how happy I am that you're looking to really make sure that our technology is where it should be. I think, you know, we've done a really good job with what we have, but if you just want to speak to the need for this technology to really bring us up to where we need to be in terms of security and things of that nature.
We had an inventory and assessment done last spring to look at where we were, based in terms of licensing, security. I think everybody's aware that basically there's bad actors that go after hospitals, they go after schools, where there's not necessarily the technology that you'll find at Microsoft or Google or General Motors, for example, but a lot at stake, a hospital or student records. So tightening up cybersecurity so that we're in a much better place with our firewalls, tighten up the process by which faculty and staff log in and log out, which is something we're just wrapping up. We also had some issues around servers that were older, networks that were older, licensing that was out of date, so we're bringing all that up to speed. We already completed about half of it, started in July and are wrapping up now, and the second phase of two phases is the one that we included in the supplemental appropriation request, which will basically be work in June, July, and August, and put us in a pretty good place.
Thanks.
Yes, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm always the bad guy, I think, when it comes to the school system. Not that I'm against the school system, just that I like to watch the dollars that are spent, because I think if you gave the school system, and I don't mean this in a derogatory manner, I could, we could probably give you 50 million and you'd probably spend it all because it's needed. I understand that. However, what I don't like, and I don't know if it really has a lot to do with this issue, is when a school board member tells me that they're going to turn back $600,000 and then it doesn't happen. Now, why would a school board member tell me that? Probably because they want me to vote for the highest level of what I can give to the school for your budget. So, when I found out that this didn't happen, it gave me a heartburn a little bit, because you know, we went over the tax cap for spending this year, which I am totally against. There's a budget, and we all have to live by it. Am I going to support this? I'm going to, in the end result, so I guess the words I just said don't mean anything, but it means something to me. Some of the games that are being played, I don't like, and it doesn't reflect on you people. It's just a part of the system, I guess. I'd like to see it come back to the city because it would probably bring back Sixth Sense, and people say to you, say to me, "Sixth Sense? Ken, what's Sixth Sense?" Well, it's Sixth Sense this year, and it's Sixth Sense next year, and that Sixth Sense goes on forever, so to speak. So, please, don't take it personal. And, you know, Mr. Superintendent, I've been wanting to come over and sit down with you, and I will. Katie, you do a great job, so please, please, don't take it personal. I'm just a guy that I try to watch money. You can ask the other eight here, maybe too much, you know? But, when you don't have it no more, what do you do? What do you do? You don't eat? You move out of Summersworth? Anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Barry.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for providing the more information around the Phase 2 technology. I know that was my request because I am very similar to Vincent in the way of when I'm putting funds out there, not to say they shouldn't go to the school, they were meant for the school, I just like to know what they're going towards and to understand where our technology was versus what we need to do to get where it should be. So I just wanted to say thank you for being very open with that information, so.
Thank you. Other discussion or questions? Okay. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate you being here tonight. All right. So, with discussion being over, remember, this is a supplemental appropriation, so we will need our six votes for this to pass tonight. Remember that. Even with one missing, it still is six. So, if you are in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 7-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vincent.
Maybe. Just kidding, yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes. Michaux.
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 7-25 has been adopted. Thank you. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance 8-25, which is to amend Chapter 34, Exemptions and Credits, Section 34.1, Elderly Property Tax Exemption, amending the amount of the elderly property tax exemption, which, if approved, would expand eligibility as previously mentioned. City Clerk.
Ordinance number 825, to amend Chapter 34, Exemptions and Credits, Section 34.1, Elderly Property Tax Exemption, amending the amount of the elderly property tax exemption.
Thank you. Ordinance 8-25, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment. Right, seeing no amendment, I will look for a motion on Ordinance 8-25. Oh, Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
A motion to approve the ordinance.
Counselor Parity Cottenzero moves to adopt Ordinance 8-25, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Ordinance 8-25. Discussion. Yes, Counselor Barry.
I just lost my train of thought. I'm so sorry. When this came before the Finance Committee, I am very happy that this is moving forward in response to a couple of comments earlier. I think that, like our city manager said, that we did miss a timeline to maybe expand this or do better in next year, so I'm hopeful that when we start getting into that phase, that maybe we look at this further and maybe either seeing if we can expand for the criteria or also maybe make it even a little bit better, because as we've said a couple of different ways tonight, that Sixth Sense can make a big difference to certain people, and that can, just even a little bit, can make a difference.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Witham.
Thank you. Points well made by my fellow counselors here on this matter. I will just share a little bit more from committee level that, if you will, this move sort of aligns with what's happened with the property reassessments, so it's sort of slid along with that. The other thing that staff provided that I thought was at least a helpful barometer to this issue is that our exemptions are sort of in the middle of other communities in Stratford County. So, we don't provide the most exemptions, we don't provide the least. We're sort of in the middle, which I think is a reasonable spot to at least start from. So, it's not like we're out of whack, for lack of a better way to describe it.
Thank you. Other discussion? All right, seeing none. If you are in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 8-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes. Michaux.
Yes.
Right, ordinance 8-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance 9-25, which is a supplemental appropriation to repair manhole structures on High Street in the vicinity of Horn Street to Sinclair Ave, which, if approved, would appropriate $17,390 from the unassigned fund balance to the capital outlay budget in the general fund, and appropriate $82,610 from the sewer fund revenue to the sewer fund budget. City Clerk.
Ordinance number 925, supplemental appropriation to repair manhole structures on High Street in the vicinity of Horn Street to Sinclair Ave.
Thank you. Ordinance 9-25, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment. All right, seeing no amendment being offered, I will look for a motion on Ordinance 9-25. Yes, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept ordinance 9-25.
Counselor Vincent moves for the adoption of Ordinance 9-25, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Ordinance 9-25. Discussion. Counselor Vincent, then Gibson again.
Thank you, Your Honor, again. So, if you've driven down High Street recently, or in the past month, I'm surprised we don't have bills from people, motorists, giving us front-end damage for that. Maybe we do. Yeah, yeah. Well, nevertheless, yeah, we need to move to fix this, and I think it's a good move. I don't understand why, you know, that whole stretch failed. I thought we would get a little bit more time out of them, because I do believe we adjusted those maybe five or six years ago, but let's just face it, when a tractor trailer truck goes down the road and it's got thousands, tens of thousands of pounds on it, hammering that, once there's a little give, it's just going to hammer it, hammer it, hammer it. And I do believe when we change them to the hinge covers, they seem to be, they seem to hold better. I don't know why. Maybe it's, I don't know, maybe the looseness of the other cover, I don't know, but I'm going to definitely, obviously, be in favor.
Counselor Gibson.
Yeah, not being familiar with the structural aspects of it, I had a question, given that so many of them along that section, is it just general wear and tear that's?
My first guess is that it's the busiest road in our city, so it has the most use, but I would defer to the city manager, who might have a better idea.
I think that's the consensus. I mean, we have a lot of trucks, buses, cars, hence, we're looking to repave it again. Some of these roads are going to be chasing, you know, every so often, whether they're manhole covers or street repaving and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Other discussion. Counselor Goodwin, then Witham.
Just building on the thread here, I too have wondered as to what is, what it is about these particular covers in this section of road, because, you know, anecdotally, yes, High Street is the busiest, but other manhole covers on High Street aren't problematic. And I do recall these being replaced not so distant past, and I actually think, just having noticed them as I was, you know, doing a schlalom maneuver around them, I think of one or two of them actually are hinge covers already. So, it's one of those things where I'm curious, you know, when we get in there, or if we have done any sort of pre-diagnostic work, if there's any insight on how they are failing specifically, because where is the obvious answer, but there are other ones that are holding up better. What is it about? Is it the soil in this part of town? Was it the original installation? How are we repairing them? Are we doing an in-kind replacement? Are we trying to assess, you know, I guess, I'm trying to get at, how can we learn from the current condition to make sure that we're not doing this again in five years?
City Manager.
I guess if the Director has more information, but what's, sometimes we just replace the covers and they're hinged, and don't redo or reestablish the base that it sits on. We just replace the covers. So, a lot of these, the bases fail. So, the underbelly of the cover needs to be rebuilt over time. Otherwise, we'd, you know, it's a matter of money and time, and every time we do a hinge cover, we look at the base, but it seems like it's going to last another three, five years, whatever the right amount of years are. But this, a lot of these need to be rebuilt with their underbelly, so to speak.
Thank you. Counselor Witham.
Yeah, just to build on what the city manager was saying, at committee level, we discussed this at some detail, and the reason the price point for these repairs is, I think, higher than I would have anticipated, is that they plan to go down into the brick layer, the supporting foundation, if you will, which has not typically been done in the past. It's just been a replacement of the ring, so we're getting into the foundation of the structure, which should firm it up a whole lot. The other reason that these perhaps have failed maybe prematurely is these covers, for whatever reason, align with not only the high volume of traffic, but the covers are right in line with where tires are. That isn't the case always with manhole covers. If they're like on the yellow line or off to the side, they're not constantly getting hit. These just happen to be in that perfect space, if you will. So, I think there's a couple of reasons for the failures. Again, this repair that we're looking to do looks to be more substantial, getting into that foundation, which is added to the price point, but I think is the right way to do it. And just as a reminder, we did authorize the repair at the last meeting, so this is the housekeeping matter to make sure we have the money to do it.
Thank you. All right. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Goodwin.
I can't recall the condition off the top of my head, but I'm wondering to Counselor Witham's point, and I too notice that these are, you know, rather perfectly aligned with typical tire placement in the lane of travel. I would notice I also, having made that observation, have noticed other manhole covers that are also in that location that aren't as problematic, so maybe it is just a matter of getting in and fixing the masonry and it will be stable again. But, you know, if there was room, oftentimes travel lanes have excess space in them, and maybe it's something to consider next time we stripe out there to, if there's room to allow it, strategically shift the white line over to maybe encourage people to stay off them, if that, I don't know, maybe encourages them to last longer.
Thank you. All right, other discussion? All right, seeing none. If you are in favor of Ordinance 9-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. Do remember, this is also a supplemental appropriation, so we'll need our six votes. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Michaux.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Ordinance 9-25 has been adopted. Brings us to our resolutions this evening. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 13-25, to authorize the city manager to sign a comprehensive recruitment contract with Municipal Resources Inc. of Plymouth, New Hampshire, for the recruitment of a city manager, which, if approved, would contract with the city with MRI for a cost to the city of $13,250. City Clerk.
Resolution number 1325, to authorize the city manager to sign a comprehensive recruitment contract with Municipal Resources, Inc. of Plymouth, New Hampshire, for the recruitment of a city manager.
Thank you. Resolution 13-25, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment, I will look for a motion on resolution thirteen dash twenty-five. Counselor Gibson?
I move that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson moves for the adoption of resolution thirteen dash twenty-five, seconded by Counselor Parity Cottenzero. Motion for the council is on the adoption of resolution thirteen dash twenty-five. Discussion. Seeing none. If you're in favor of the adoption of resolution thirteen dash twenty-five, you'll state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Micho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Goodwin.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Cottenzero.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution thirteen dash twenty-five has been adopted. Brings us to item sixteen on our agenda, which is new business.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move that council rules be suspended to read ordinance ten twenty-five and eleven twenty-five by title only.
All right, Counselor Witham moves to suspend council rules to read ordinance is ten twenty-five and eleven twenty-five by title.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Vincent. Again, the motion for the council is to suspend rules to read ordinances ten dash twenty-five and eleven dash twenty-five by title only. Is there a discussion? Yes, Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
Just to note that the first ordinance contains many street specifications and the second one, many, many chapters, and that folks, if they do want to see or read the whole thing, it can be found in the city council package, so folks know why we're doing it by title only.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Other discussion, Counselor Witham?
Yeah, just to feed on that, thank you. That's exactly why the motion was made, because I think if someone was listening at home, you would not be able to follow the bouncing ball here, so.
Appreciate that. All right, if you are in favor, oh, sorry, I should ask for more discussion. I apologize, didn't mean to cut anybody off. Okay, seeing none. If you're in favor of this, you'll state by saying aye. If you're opposed, you'll state by saying nay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, seems like we will have this passed. We will now only read them by title only. Thank you. All right, Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading by title only on ordinance ten dash twenty-five, which is to amend Chapter thirteen, Police Offenses, Section G, Permit and Reserved Parking by adding parking spaces along Main Street permitted for parking during a declared snow emergency.
Ordinance, ordinance number ten twenty-five, to amend Chapter thirteen, Police Offenses, Section G, Permit and Reserved Parking by adding parking spaces along Main Street permitted for parking during a declared snow emergency.
Thank you. Ordinance ten dash twenty-five, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time a public hearing will be held. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading by title only on ordinance eleven dash twenty-five to amend Chapter nineteen, Zoning Ordinance, Section Three, Establishment of Zoning Districts to Create a Maple Street Overlay District and Other Supporting Amendments. City Clerk.
Ordinance number eleven twenty-five, to amend Chapter nineteen, Zoning Ordinance, Section Three, Establishment of Zoning District to Create the Maple Street Recreation Overlay District and Other Supporting Amendments.
Thank you. Ordinance eleven dash twenty-five, having read a first and second, or excuse me, a first time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time a public hearing will be held. All right, brings us to our resolutions this evening on our first read. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution sixteen dash twenty-five, which is to authorize the city manager to acquire property adjacent to the former National Guard Readiness Center off Blackwater Road via lot line adjustment with Public Service Company of New Hampshire, i.e. Eversource. City Clerk.
Resolution number sixteen twenty-five, to authorize the city manager to acquire property adjacent to the former National Guard Readiness Center off Blackwater Road via a lot line adjustment with Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as Eversource, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas the city council adopted resolution twenty-four twenty-four on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three, to authorize the city manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement with Kenneth Scarpetti and Douglas Anderson of Hooksett, New Hampshire, to sell the former National Guard Readiness Center located at fifteen Blackwater Road for residential development. And whereas, as part of the sales agreement, Kenneth Scarpetti and Douglas Anderson would like to acquire the right-of-way formerly known as Maple Street Extension, also referred to as Parkview Terrace, which abuts the National Guard Readiness Center. And whereas, a portion of the right-of-way that intersects Blackwater Road is currently owned by Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as Eversource, and the balance of the right-of-way is owned by the city. And whereas, the city must acquire the portion of the right-of-way owned by Eversource in order to convey the right-of-way to the Kenneth, to the Kenneth Scarpetti and Douglas Anderson. And whereas, city staff reviewed this issue with officials from Eversource, and they have agreed to a lot line adjustment with the city to convey ownership of the entire right-of-way. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth that the city manager is authorized to acquire property adjacent to the former National Guard Readiness Center off Blackwater Road via a lot line adjustment with Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as Eversource, and take all other such actions relative to this lot line adjustment determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by request, Mayor Matt Gerding, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Resolution sixteen dash twenty-five, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until the next regularly scheduled meeting. All right, that brings us to other. First up, we have a vote to release the restrictions imposed upon the property located at twenty-eight Green Street and to authorize the city manager to take any necessary action to release the restrictions. Again, as the city manager previously mentioned, the current owner, Robert Puridy, is here tonight. If you do want to request to suspend rules, we can do that to have him answer any questions. But before doing that, I just would ask what the wishes of the council are. Counselor Witham?
I move that we release the restrictions for the property noted.
Thank you. Counselor Witham moves to grant and release the restrictions, seconded by Counselor Vincent. Again, motion for the council is to release the restrictions imposed upon the property at twenty-eight Green Street and to authorize the city manager to take any necessary actions. Discussion. Counselor Goodwin and then Witham.
Thank you. The Economic Development Committee reviewed this and the majority of us agreed that these restrictions should be lifted. I think some of our thoughts, or at least my thoughts, were that the original restrictions were largely, in my opinion, overreach of council. That zoning determines a building's use and the historic significance of a structure, which part of came up in our conversation as well, is determined by the HDC, and this property is not in the district. Council has sole authority to change both zoning and the district, historic district, and has chosen to do that from time to time. And if for whatever reason, the zoning is not to the council's liking, we can choose to change zoning, but we shouldn't be acting on a deed-by-deed basis in restricting property unless we're trying to protect public benefit, in my opinion. And there's no public benefit identified with the deed restrictions here that I'm aware of. It was also came up in our discussion that there was a desire that, you know, when this property was owned by the city for back taxes and disposed of, that it was a hope that this property would remain in commercial use. Again, I would cite that, you know, residential use is allowed in zoning, so I don't know why we would pick, cherry pick this particular property to be commercial use in perpetuity. And I would also note that, you know, the nature of commercial uses has changed over time, that we are largely oversupplied with retail and commercial spaces. The nineties solid big box stores, early two thousands solid big box stores, which contributed to the decline of Main Streets, and online shopping has now contributed even further to the decline of Main Street businesses and is now competing with big box. So then we've just got to come to terms with the fact that we are oversupplied with commercial spaces, and most of those commercial spaces are fully depreciated or greatly depreciated in a way that they are not easily updated to modern standards for commercial use or nor they located in places where that is in demand. So the highest and best use is very much likely housing, and that is indicated to us through the request to have this restriction lifted, because the current owner knows that his property is more valuable for residential use, because that is what is in demand. That's what the people want. They want housing. So I'll be in full support of removing these restrictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Witham and then Barry.
So I was on the city council when these restrictions were put in place. It was some time ago. Don't ask me why I voted for them, because I cannot recall. I agree with Counselor that we should let zoning speak for itself, and if we don't like the zoning, we should change that. I will tell you that there's a good chance that back when I voted for this, I was thinking that this property was in the historic district. It wasn't until I took a walking tour of the historic district and you start looking closely at the map, that particularly in that section of the city, the line wanders rather aimlessly, and one could scratch your head as to why the lines were drawn where they were drawn. So there's a good chance I thought it was in the historic district. And I will also say that back in that timeframe, the need for housing wasn't as front and center as it is now. And the need for commercial development was still seen as important from a tax-based perspective, so I think that was perhaps part of it as well, but times have changed and they've changed rather radically. But I think to the point that was made, that, you know, Counselor Goodwin made, that if we like zoning, let's work with it. If we don't, let's change the zoning, but let's not, I think you used the word cherry pick, and I think that's an appropriate term. So I think lifting these odd deed restrictions makes sense, at least now.
Thank you. Counselor Barry?
I'm definitely in support of this, and I have a couple of different reasons a little bit. When I first read this, I was a little concerned about that it was ever put into place, to be very honest with you, because to say not allowed under any circumstances on a very specific parcel, even though that zoning could, again, be different, is a little concerning. So I would hope that we might use this as a learning in the future, that I think, again, to mimic others, that, you know, our zoning could change over time, and to have something be in contradiction to our zoning is very hard, because again, neighborhoods change, people leave, come back, different purposes are there, and our zoning is adaptive for that reason. So to have these kind of restrictions on something, I'm also a big supporter of adapter for use, and to have something limited in this way makes that very, very hard. So I'm in support of it for those reasons.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gibson and then Parity Cottenzero.
I was a member of the committee that voted against this. I cannot speak to the rationale used originally for doing this, but thinking it over since that came before committee, the, to me, it is a historic building. It represents an era in this city that was entirely different. It also is one of the last remaining commercial-type properties on Green Street, which was once a vibrant commercial avenue in this city. And bit by bit, we've taken it apart. The reasoning behind putting these restrictions in is, again, I can't speak to what the minds of the individuals were, but I think some of them at least may have been thinking along the same lines that I was, that the opportunity to sell the property came up, and rather than having to hold things up while they went through a whole series of processes to rezone or add it to the historic district, well, if they want to buy it with this restriction in the deed, okay. Now the owner is asking us to make them whole for a decision that they made previously with these restrictions in place, which I've never agreed with when it comes to property. You don't buy something knowing what it is and then, hey, really, you shouldn't make me have to stick to this. And this is what's basically being asked of us. I agree, it might have a higher use as residential property, but over and above anything else, it's kind of like you buy a car, you get it home, you've had it for a while, oh, wait a minute, I didn't get the deluxe package on this. Please, put it into my car now, even though I didn't pay for it. That may not be a great example, but what I'm trying to get across is, you make a purchase, you live with the decision. You don't come back to the seller and say, change the rules, change the product. You can keep tearing the little pieces of the city out just because it's convenient or highest use, and pretty soon you don't have much of a city left. And I've seen too many of these decisions made in this city over the years. You can go all the way back to the nineteen sixties with the Great Urban Renewal, and it's been one thing after another ever since then. Now admittedly, I wasn't a resident there, but anybody who's been to the museum or looked at the pictures in the museum knows what was lost in this city through, I don't want to say greed or political manipulation, but a lot of it, that's what it really came down to. And I will definitely not vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Parity Cottenzero.
Yes, thank you. I'm definitely in support of lifting the restrictions. My comment is just, I don't see it specified exactly what, but I know during our discussion at the committee level, we really agreed with lifting all of the restrictions for all of the reasons stated, that there were like these three random things that were pulled out that couldn't be done. So I just want to make sure that we are releasing all of the restrictions, since it's not specified.
Thank you. Yes, I believe the way that it is, it's the, I'll release the restrictions that are currently imposed on that property. Thank you. A good clarification, though. Counselor Witham?
Thank you. Just to build on, you know, let's let the zoning ordinance speak for what it is. I think that's a real important point. I'm glad that you brought that up, Counselor Goodwin, and I can't underscore it enough. I would, it was during the same sort of era on council that the old police station was in front of us as well. And that got loaded up with a bunch of deed restrictions for its development, which, in my opinion, at least in part, was why it sat and sat and sat. Either we like our zoning ordinance or we don't like our zoning ordinance. Either we like the size of our historic district overlay or we don't. But those are lessons learned. I can't believe I voted for any of this stuff back in the day. How did I get a passing grade? How did I get reelected? I have no idea, but I did. And two wrongs don't make a right, so I'm going to at least try to fix it now. So there you go.
Learning from your mistakes, right? All right, other discussion? Yes, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, zoning, huh? It's really, really sometimes mind-boggling, because we want this, we don't want this, you know what I mean? It's like, I don't know if there's any right answers sometimes with this, it's just difficult. However, Counselor Gibson has a good point. Why would somebody buy property and have these restrictions on it? It's a good question. I mean, I'd say, I'm going to vote for this, because I think that it's good for what's going forward, but that's a good question. Why would somebody purchase this? And, you know, that's just my thought. And that's why I get to put my two cents in, so to speak, if even if counselors like or don't like it. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to remind counsel that it is not unfamiliar for properties to be sold with, you know, requests to change things. We recently just sold the National Guard with one of the requests from us being, changing zoning. It happens all the time. Just want to put that out there. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Barry?
Just because I don't disagree with other comments that this is a very unique building on that corridor, and again, kind of going back to my adapter for use, just because some of these restrictions are removed doesn't necessarily mean automatically that that particular building would have to change. We don't know, right? At this point in time, you don't have to agree with me, that is fine. I have no plans in front of me to say what is the possibility, but some of these things, I am looking at these lists, and I would go, a small convenience store actually would be kind of nice right there in a residential, because people like to pop into a store right next to it. So for me, again, I don't like to limit uses in this way, because, again, people's needs change. The car has changed things. Our way of walkability has changed things and what we want in our areas, and that's where I just have these kind of problems. And I'm not opposed to certain restrictions, like conservation land has these types of restrictions. restrictions to limit this stuff, but in this, I think there are other ways that you can limit this particular property, and I don't disagree that this probably should have been in the district, but we weren't part of that decision at that time, and we can't go back and unfortunately force that issue. We need to work with it now to make that right. So, that's my two cents there.
Thank you. Other discussion, Council Gibson?
Okay. First off, I disagree with the mayor claiming that the action previously was a mistake. We don't know. Nobody seems to be able to tell me what happened. I agree with whatever sentiments may have been present on the council at that time. Changing zoning in or in historic district is a much more involved process than making deed restrictions. The buyer agrees to them, boom, it's done. My feeling is, without knowing, that was a convenient way to convey intent without having to go through a whole bunch of procedures in order to do it. I could be wrong. I know I'm going to lose this argument, because I'm a stick in the mud when it comes to buildings that have value. And the holy grail of highest use is not something I've ever subscribed to, because if you did that to everything in this city, guess what? There'd be no historic district.
Council Vincent?
With all due respect, and I mean this wholeheartedly, this does not happen all the time. This happens sometimes, not all the time.
Council Goodwin? I guess I would just say, if there are members of the council that are concerned about the building's historic significance and protection, then they could make a proposal to come before council to amend the HDC district.
In fact, I remember amendments to the HDC district not that long ago. Other discussion? All right, let's move forward, please. If you're in favor of releasing the restrictions, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you will state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
No.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Me show.
Yes.
Right, restrictions are released. Thank you. All right, next up, we, oh yeah, no, we did skip that, I apologize, we already voted on B, so we are on C. We have a council vote to confirm proposed Hamilton Street water tank replacement projects. There have been two that we have come to kind of a final decision on. We need to narrow it down to one. So, I'd like to ask what the wishes of the council are first, and then propose one, discuss it, if it makes its way through, so be it. Are there wishes? Councilor Witham?
Yes, I guess for discussion purposes, I would move that we stick with location C, which is adjacent to the existing water tank.
All right, Council Witham moves to support the proposal for location C, again, the one that's directly adjacent to the water tank.
So, is that a sec? That would require a second? I'll second that.
I use C loosely, because I think it's been numbered as one for the current iteration.
Yes. I think if we look...
Can we have the director just outline the locations? Because we changed from letters to numbers, and it confused us.
Without objection.
I don't know why we didn't stick with the same thing. Let's go with Braille next time, perhaps.
Braille. Thank you, yes, without objection.
Yeah, the, as indicated in our memo, site three or option three is the...
Oh, yeah, would you please turn your mic on?
Thank you. Option three is the location adjacent to the existing tank, and option two is behind the rec building or the skate park.
So, amend my motion to option three.
One question.
Okay, C.
One question for the...
Yes, before the second, go ahead, quick question.
Yes, for the people at home, can you try to explain what adjacent to it would be, please?
Certainly, Councilor. The adjacent to location is immediately next to the existing tank.
So, if I'm, if I may, so if I'm coming up, uh, Hamilton, it's going to be in back of it, in front of it, to the side?
Details of that specific have to be worked out
Right.
On the site plan, but it will be in that same vicinity. The plan, the key part of that, is that the existing tank would be operational during construction. So, it would be positioned slightly on the other side to...
Close to it.
Close to it.
Thank you.
Perfect. So, are you still holding your second?
Yes, I am, because that's the location I think is best.
Thank you. So, just to make sure everyone's clear, that was important clarification, so thank you. Again, it would be as close to, as directly next to it as possible. So, again, the motion for the council is to confirm this location being almost directly next to it, as opposed to the other location, which was the skate park. So, discussion. Yes, Council Witham?
Thank you. I did look at all of the renderings that were done. Quite frankly, I was indifferent as to the look in terms of the location. One did not appeal or not appeal to me more than the other, they were sort of similar. The skate park one had added cost of somewhere between five and $700,000, I thought was the number.
Yes, and that included the rec building.
Right.
Yeah, it was, it was a combination, the skate park's affected, and the rec building likely will be affected.
So, just in terms of complexity, it's less complex, and again, for me, it didn't outwardly look a whole lot different. I think one of the things that I guess I was surprised at, so I'm glad we went through this iteration process to do the renderings, is the new tank is not substantially taller, it's five feet taller than the existing tank. It's bigger around at the top, which is where the water volume would be. It's a different-looking tank, so you have to have that in mind when you look at it, but in terms of a height, it's no higher. I think the thing that maybe makes it jump out a bit more is its color, right? That grayish-white cement look versus the, the blue of the tank that I think we've just become very accustomed to over the years. I think it was green way back in the day, so it's had a couple of different colors. So, it's a change, it's going to change the look, but I would believe that in time, we would get used to it.
Thank you. Other discussion, Council Vincent and Parity Catanzaro?
Thank you. So, my thought on it was that the closer it is to the existing tank, maybe less cost for when they have to hook it in, so to speak. If it's, tank's here, new one's here, it might not be like you'd have to run piping. It may be miniscule, but still, I believe it's probably going to be a less, a less cost. And I'm not an engineer, I'm just thinking that the building I've done over the years is probably going to be a less cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parity Catanzaro?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for mentioning the cost. That had slipped my mind in my current preference for two in the, in the renderings. I don't know that it is large enough to overcome that cost. I don't like an impact to the skate park, I don't like an impact to the rec building. It seems a little less ostentatious to be tucked into the trees there. I guess I have two questions. One, what, if anything, do we know is going to happen to the old tank, and what's the timeline? I imagine at some point, it'll be, I don't know, is it, is it going to be left there if it's no longer in use, or are we sort of leaving it there because it's a cost to take it down?
The plan would be to remove the tank.
Okay. Is there any thought to when-ish years?
Yes, in the context of making sure that we still have water and water storage during construction. So, the plan would be, the tank is active, and that at some point, following construction and then acceptance of the new tank, we would then start the decommissioning and shutting it down, and then begin a dismantling of that. So, you know, that, that would be concurrent with the construction phase. We'd have to get a little more detail back to you and the rest of the council with regard to what that exactly looks like. Is it six months after, is it months after? But we, it would be methodically right after.
As part of the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Has there been any outreach to the surrounding neighbors of that property?
Not specifically, but our office did receive a phone call from a butter not too far from the rec building. They just raised questions, and we provided information about it.
Yeah. I'm a little concerned that we have these renderings, and I don't know if people at home can see them, or if it's really been publicized. It's just, it's such a big thing that will be there forever. I don't know if, I know we've already delayed this one, so I guess my just curiosity is, is it going to significantly impact the process to delay, to do specific outreach to those abutting neighbors, to see if there's a really strong sentiment when they see these, these renderings? I believe they're a part of the city manager's packet, which not everyone will know to look at, it's not part of the city council packet. And then, my final comment is, it was brought up that it would be a great opportunity for some sort of artwork being right next to the field, go Toppers was brought up, welcome to Sommersworth, whatever. So, I also just wonder, is there thought to the community input on what might be put there as a design?
Certainly, I think that's a, an idea that we can work with. Earlier, we were talking about the color, this is a very generic...
Mike, the, we can talk, the determination of what color and whether we do some out-up, that's down the road, with all due respect, but can you give a time, like, once we have a, you know, a preliminary design, and the location is determined, we can certainly notify abutters up there, and that, that we're in process, and this is where we're looking at placing it, this is the height and so forth and so on, that, that's, that's an easy task, that I'm more than willing to work with staff to make sure that happens.
But that would be after the location is finalized, right? That would be after their chance to come before us and say, "Can you please move it over here?"
No, I think we could do it sooner than later. I mean, once the council's made a decision.
Yes.
I just want to make sure your question was answered. Our Councilor Parity Catanzaro, are you concerned that by choosing a location tonight, it doesn't allow for input from the public?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I guess the question still remains on the timeline impact if the decision is not decided tonight.
Yeah, so if we moved this decision out till the next meeting, so that we could directly talk to the folks on the hill there, and see if there is any impact, or sorry, any input before we make a decision, would that impact this process? Are we sort of waiting for a, an urgent thing?
City Manager?
When we meet, I don't, unless Mike feels differently, we can certainly delay. It would be nice to get an idea from, from consensus of council at least, maybe not a final vote, but consensus of what we're looking at, and then they can drill down on perhaps a little bit further as, as far as having the engineer here even, as far as what, a better estimate of what it would cost to place it in the, in the second location that was up for discussion tonight, or leaving it right next to it, and what that all means as far as piping and all that, so we can drill down a little bit more on the information.
Right. We're on hold at the moment with regard to taking the next steps with this.
What's, what's the timeline on getting the design done?
Probably approximately a year.
So, I mean, another, another few weeks isn't going to really kill us.
It's a substantial project.
Good. Thank you for the answer.
So, a vote tonight is not a vote to all steamhead on this process, on this project, it would still have to go through approving the money for it, et cetera.
Yes, but it also sounds like if we don't vote tonight, it's not an impediment to the project. Other questions?
I'm all set for now.
Thank you. Council Vincent?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Your Honor, thank you, that we make the vote tonight, and then if anything needs to be adjusted, we could do it later on.
Thank you. Council Gibson?
I don't see a problem voting tonight for the location, because right off the bat, what are we talking? Less than 100 feet apart? The different locations?
Yeah, approximately, probably a little more than that, I think, but yeah, approximately.
I mean...
Thank you. Councilor Goodwin?
Thank you. Um, I would love to hear maybe from the, either the director or the manager on, for my benefit and for the public, on what the process is for plan review or design review for public improvement like this. I don't believe it needs to go to planning board, so what does that process look like? Who's approving the design? And where does public input come in?
What we've done in the past with major projects, wastewater treatment plant, water plant, we have actually taken these, take, take the projects, the site plan and design to the planning board for review. And we've done workshops with the council as well, to make sure that council is informed and is comfortable with the decision. This is a, this is a large project. This is a little, at least estimated at a little over 6 million, so, and by the time we were under construction. So, we do see it as part of our overall obligation to the community, as well as to our policymakers and our planning board. Yeah?
Thank you. Curious, you know, in our, in our memo here, agreed with the prior comments, my general preference is to two, just because I think it's less visual impact, but it just seems like there's significant cost to that location, which makes the third option more favorable. I guess, do we have an understanding of what is contributing? The estimate was 200 to $700,000 for location two. What are the complications for, where does that estimate come from?
Well, yes, it came from our engineering team, actually, in, in the context of the possibilities. We have not finalized design, so there are elements that will come through as, as we formal, as we do formal engineering and, and site plan development.
Can you give me some idea of what, you know, I make budgets, estimated budgets for construction projects too, and I also put WAGs, Wild Bass guesses with like, oh, $50,000 because there's a risk of this, or $100,000 because there's a risk of that. What are the risk categories you're budgeting for?
The type of building that we would replace it with, the rec building, for instance.
You'd need to replace the rec building.
That's a likelihood that we would have to do, just due to the site and how constrained it would be with construction and excavation and tank capacity, so...
Great, thank you.
So, that's a range.
Thank you. And I know, and I don't want to belabor this, but the, I do think public input is going to be important. This is a, you know, by design, going to be the tallest structure in the city. It's night, the structure itself is 95 feet, it's on the top of the tallest point in Sommersworth. This is, if this were anywhere else and not owned by the city, there would be significant public input and opinion, it is going to be very visible, it's going to be very long-lived. I just want to make sure that we are not being flippant about the process, and then living with a ugly, bright, white, sore thumb in the city's, one of the city's, you know, most beautiful parks. So, I, again, I, just to, for the public benefit and for mine, it does, you know, this is a prefabricated system, I assume, did, are there like sort of off-the-shelf color options? It sounds like applying art could be an option. I just want to make sure that that is something that we can explore in the future, and there's feasibility to that.
Yes, staff anticipates that there'll be options for that.
Okay. It was mentioned earlier, and not to belabor the point, but I do think the blue color is actually historically often used as a color to mask buildings, because it's the color of the sky, so this is less dominant on the horizon, and if it was historically painted green, I'm sure it was designed to paint and, to blend in with the evergreens behind it. So, white is not a color that lends itself to, to blend in, so I'm definitely in favor of when this does move forward, of exploring both a different base color and/or art, as well as screening around the base with new plantings to soften the base of that, given that location three, which seems to be the most cost-effective location, is at the end of a, of a city street, so when you're coming up that street, all you're going to see coming up a hill is a 95-foot-tall white structure. So, that is something that I might be, want to be mindful of. Those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mike, I think we had talked before, and I don't recall if you were getting any answer as far as the topography. Does it go down over by the skate park, or is it level with...
It goes down slightly. There is a little bit of a grade separation in where the skate park is.
Is that going to... Is that going to add to the cost, or is it insignificant?
That site adds to the cost, because then there's the cost to relocate the skate park. And there's some site work. And then the cost of the building is.
Topography issue.
Yeah.
Non-issue.
Yeah.
Counselor Barry, and then Counselor Gibson.
One of the things when I would be doing cell phone tower reviews, when I would talk to different communities, it's actually really funny to hear how many people don't even see these things once they are in place and they get used to them, which is, it sounds weird to hear that, but like, when you're driving up a hill, and not to discredit that you would see this, but you have your car roof, you're not looking up. If you're a passenger, possibly yes. But I definitely agree with that we should beautify it, that we should do some kind of artwork, plantings around it. But I like the thought of putting it closest to the original one, because we've kind of already are used to it. We've adapted to it. We're used to seeing a structure there. And so it's one of those kind of out of sight, out of mind. You know it's there, but every time you drive by it, you don't actually think about it. So that's one of the reasons I particularly like number three. And as those get taller, again, granted, this is by a plain area. People are out of their cars and different things. But again, it's one of those, they're adapted to seeing a structure. So I think keeping it as close to the original also helps lend to that.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson?
I don't know what the proper format is to do this, but can we shelf this, table it, whatever? Because we're getting into stuff here that has nothing to do with the question that's before us. If there are this many questions by councillor, refer to a committee, or just forget the whole thing and get with the proper, with Mr. Valinsky or the city manager, and discuss this stuff.
We have a motion on the table. So we still need to rectify the motion. Certainly, you can move to move the motion.
Can I move the motion?
Counselor Gibson moves the motion. Counselor Vincent seconds that. Again, if you are, I think this is a non-debatable, if I remember correctly. If you're in favor of moving the motion, you will say by saying aye. If you are opposed, you will say by saying nay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
Nay.
We're going to go to a, excuse me, a roll call vote, just for clarification. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Perry, Katzenzero?
No.
Misha?
Yes.
Witham?
No.
Goodwin?
No.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
No.
Four-four.
Oh, my gosh, you guys.
Oh, come on.
Dana was mayor for how long and how many times did he break his tie?
Ten years.
This is what, like, the fourth time I've had to do this? My God, you guys are killing me. No, I'm going to go no. I want to keep.
Oh, come on.
Please do not argue. This is how it is. Go ahead, Counselor Witham.
Thank you. I get it. This is, this will be change, right? One could argue significant change. It's as proposed, the white color is definitely different than the blue or the green. It is bigger. It's five feet taller. It's much bigger diameter at the very top, smaller at the bottom. It's in a historic area. It's at one of our premier parks. This is hard, because it's significant change. This came out of committee with location C, now three, being the recommended spot. We paused on it to get a look at what the cost would look like if it was in location two, where the skate park rec building is, and would there be any cost elements? We've gotten that. We've heard tonight, and I agree with Director Bobinski, that all major capital projects have gone through the planning board, where there's notification of a butters and all of those sorts of things. I think there's been very good feedback by all councillors in terms of, could we look at some color? Could we look at some screening? Could we, I think all those things make sense, and it's part of the conversation, part of the input that the design team would look for. But if we want to keep playing ping pong, two, three, two, three, we'll never build the damn thing, right? We got to make a decision and get, as hard as it may be, because it's change. So thank you, Your Honor, for breaking the tie to keep the conversation going so we can have a vote.
They've all been difficult. Oh, man. Counselor Goodwin, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you. Agreed with those sentiments. I was originally, you know, I think a supporter of the location B, location two, where the skate park is, in light of the costs. I'm comfortable moving forward conceptually at this time with a vote for location three, knowing that there's more process ahead. So tonight, the way I'm thinking about this is yes and. So yes to conceptually moving forward to that location tonight, and we need to continue to have this conversation to make sure that that is the right fit for the abutters, and that we are doing what we can to make that fit the correct move for the community. Because as it's, you know, schematically shown to us tonight, which is not a final drawing, it is not an acceptable condition to me, but this location is acceptable conceptually.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Witham?
Not to belabor this, but if the conceptual pictures that have been developed by the design engineers could find their way onto the city website, just for ease of residents finding them, so they can provide us with feedback, that would be helpful.
Great. Thank you. Other discussion? Counselor Perry, Katzenzero?
Yes, thank you. I was convinced quite a while ago, actually, hearing that there's a lot more process. It is helpful to have discussions. If five minutes of extra conversation can make us all feel comfortable, I don't think that's unreasonable. That is our job. That is what we are here to do. So I will be supporting moving forward with this phase, with phase three, so that we can get more facts determined, et cetera, and continue with the process. Thanks.
Other discussion? All right, seeing none. If you're in favor of the proposal, which is location three, which is directly next to the water tank, you will say by saying yes. If you are not, you will say by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson? Perry, Katzenzero?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Great. Proposal is supported. Great. Thank you, everybody. All right. Brings us to agenda item 17, which is comments by visitors. Summersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with council rule seven dash C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, the mayor, council members, city managers, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing none. I will move to agenda item 18, which is closing comments by councillors. Counselor Peppin's actually on my list to go first, so Counselor Vincent, that means it's you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
Did I blackout? Did we not talk about the readiness center?
We voted for that right directly after my mayor's report.
Oh, no. No, no, sorry.
Did I miss one?
No, the National Guard, sorry, the National Guard.
Oh, I thought you said.
Lot line, the lot line adjustment. Do I miss that?
No, we did that.
What is?
We did that.
Oh, it was a reading. It was a reading, sorry. Okay, thank you.
Wait a second. I am spacey tonight, so I wouldn't have put it past me to totally skip right over that. Yes, exactly, exactly. That was like the lull of the meeting. All right, Counselor Vincent.
Thank you. One quick thing. It goes out to Public Works. The new hot box is working. It keeps our asphalt and tire warm, and they've done a great job. I had a concern over at Greenfield Drive, and they addressed it. And they've done, I believe, Willian Drive also, and areas around the city. Great job. Great job. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Counselor Gibson, you're next.
No.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Perry, Katzenzero, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I did want to raise a matter that I brought up last meeting when the mayor was not here, but just another comment to make sure that a committee takes up the leash laws issue with folks having their dogs off leashes, and what the process is for if people are accosted by said dogs. So I look forward to that discussion. And just thank you to members of council for being able to agree and disagree and be professional. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, it was my plan. Thank you for reminding me to refer that to public safety. All right, Counselor Misha?
Thank you. Counselor Cameron commented on during her rec meeting. And I just want to let everybody know that I got contacted yesterday to be invited to the Summersworth Senior Picnic, which is tomorrow, October 22, at the Flanagan Center, in which this person that contacted me also wanted me to urge other councillors to please attend. Even if it's just for a few minutes, just do a walk-through, say hi. But it'd be nice to let our seniors know that we're behind them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Bring it over to the at-large side. Counselor Witham?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I'll be away from the city tomorrow, so I cannot attend the senior picnic. I have attended in the past, but it is a great event, so look forward to hearing the reports out tomorrow. Counselor Cameron mentioned during her rec committee report about the sort of swap of land from the old St. Laurent Park to accommodate the solar project there. I do like the idea of trying to move it in the direction of the Malley Farm, even if that means rezoning some land there. I think it does make sense. There's already two ball fields there. I know the Conservation Commission is looking at a trail network in that area, so there's a lot of symmetry in that decision. So I'm on board with where the committee is pointing the arrow right now for that swap of land. And just as a reminder to city staff, I know we had in first reading tonight, the additional snow emergency parking location on Main Street, which I will be supporting at our next meeting. We currently have two, one at the Noble Pines and one at St. Jules Bisson Park. We talked in committee about getting professional signs installed for the winter so that they're easily visible. In the past, they've been put on barricades that blow over, get plowed over. So a more permanent sign, if we could just make sure that we're contemplating what that might say, what it might look like, where they might be, that would be great, because the ground will be frozen all too soon. I hate to say it, but that's a true story.
Thank you. Counselor Goodwin?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to give a shout out to Good Samaritan, who helped me out. I was running some errands a couple weeks ago, or a week and a half ago, and went to the Rite Aid, getting some, you know, prescriptions, and then going to the bank to cash some checks. And I get to the bank and come to find out that the primary check that I'm going to cash is not in my pocket. So I run back to the Rite Aid, and I'm like, oh, no, like, where did this go? Folks at Rite Aid haven't seen it. As I'm walking out of the Rite Aid back to my car, being like, I guess I just lost, you know, however much money, the Summersworth Police called me because a Good Samaritan had already turned in the check. So thank you to that person and to the Summersworth Police Department for your quick work in returning that to me. I was just very impressed at how quick that process happened. So wonderful community here in Summersworth, looking out for each other, and our team at the Police Department for their quick response. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cameron?
Thank you, Your Honor. We had our Don't Trash Summersworth this past Saturday. We did Stackpole Road. We had four volunteers. We got six bags, a piece of vinyl siding, and a piece of metal. And I would like to do a shout out to Idlehurst, because they were going to take care of our trash for us as we left it there. And I didn't have to bother Public Works for picking it up this time. And I would be in favor of renaming that street Fireball Lane. Now, you're wondering why I say that? Because of all the fireball nips we found. I'm not kidding. Right? So, and I want everybody to be on the lookout for our Christmas holiday decorating contest coming up. It's going to be Holidays in the Hilltop City Festival of Lights 2024. We're going to be getting the Facebook page up and running, probably hopefully by the end of this week, or next week.
Soon, I promise.
Soon. Okay, we got this. So be on the lookout for that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much.
Hopefully be fast. I just wanted to remind everybody that trick-or-treating is next week. I believe at our city hall, it's on the 30th. I forget the exact time, unfortunately. Just kind of a shout out to please be safe, you know, keep on the sidewalks, out of the right of ways. You know, there's going to be little ones around, so please, just everybody be cautious. I also wanted to just give a shout out that, you know, when I used to watch the city council meetings, I loved that we could have discussions. We don't always agree, but we're always very polite about it. Mr. Witham and I are never on the same page a lot of the time, so, but we can do that very nicely. So it's, and I also feel like if we're not on the same page, that means most of our residents aren't. And if they don't hear it, you know, they're probably thinking it if we're thinking it. So I just love seeing the discussions.
Thank you so much. Still laughing about Fireball Lane. Where are we? Item 19, future agenda items. We have the leash law stuff to public safety. Anything else that I missed? Oh, yeah, electioneering reminder, thank you. There was a conversation at the last meeting that I was not in attendance for about electioneering and council rules. I have requested from the city manager that he reach out to our city's lawyers, just to make sure there's no First Amendment, like, free speech violations before we send it to committee. But after we hear back from them, I will, you know, make the decision as to whether they advise us to send it to committee or not, to see if we can come up with something. Other future agenda items? Seeing none. Hold on, almost there. Next is item 20, non-public sessions. We have none. Counselor Vincent?
Make a motion.
Moves of the city council stand in adjournment, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Question mark, council is a German. If you're in favor, please say by saying aye. If you're opposed, please state by saying nay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.